All right, can someone please have a freaking... certified closed meeting?
Anybody?
Okay, Madam Chair, moved that we reconvene the open meeting to open meeting?
Thank you, and very good, and then can we certify the closed meeting, please?
Yes, whereas the Falls Church Public School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3711B of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Falls Church Public School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge. One, only public business lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification applies; and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you much, gentlemen.
Mr. Rankuma.
Yes.
Mr. Castillo.
All right.
Ms. Carney.
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence.
Yes.
Mr. Sharp.
Yes.
Ms. Ward.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Will you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, very good. The next thing is to adopt the agenda for this evening. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
No motion.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed or abstentions? All right, very good. We've adopted the agenda for the evening. The next thing is public comments and requests. I do have one slip in front of me with the name of David Russell. If you want to come forward, please say your name and your address, and then you'll have three minutes to tell us what you'd like us to hear.
Great. David Russell, 609 Poplar Drive here in Falls Church City. I have a somewhat uncomfortable subject, but it's one I think needs to be addressed, so I appreciate you taking the time to hear me out. In 2011, Falls Church City resident Michael Gardner was arrested and charged on multiple counts related to sexual abuse of minors. He was released on bond with the condition he not have any contact with any minor children. I understand Mr. Gardner did not live in Falls Church in the months leading up to his trial. Mr. Gardner was convicted in 2012 on the basis of his victims' direct testimony and DNA evidence. He was sentenced to 22 years in prison. Last month, the Virginia Supreme Court reversed those convictions because the judge improperly limited the testimony of Mr. Gardner's character witnesses. Basically, Mr. Gardner's friends were allowed to testify that he's a good guy generally, but were not allowed to testify about his reputation in the community as a good caretaker of children. He will be tried again in February 2015. Michael Gardner has been released on bond again, and the Falls Church Police Department believes he intends to live in Falls Church until his new trial. This time, the conditions of his release only prohibit contact with the victims and their families and unsupervised contact with children other than his own. The Falls Church Police Department told me he enjoys the same access to our schools as any other parent. I came here tonight to make sure the school board is aware that Michael Gardner is back in our community under substantially more lenient conditions that were in place before his first trial. He can walk his kids to and from school. He can also attend sporting events, school plays, parent-teacher conferences, and similar events so long as there is no unsupervised contact with children. Now, in the eyes of the law, Mr. Gardner is innocent until proven guilty, and I support that. However, many of us in the community are concerned about his access to schools and other public places where children are likely to gather. I urge the school board to pay close attention to this situation and take all steps necessary to ensure the safety of our children. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, recognition and reports. Don't see any folks here tonight. Oh, I'm sorry. Do we have another letter to be read into the...
Yes, yes.
Sorry about that, yep.
And it's a nice communication on top of it. The school health aides write to the school board to express their sincere gratitude for adjusting the school health aide salaries in the upcoming school year.
All right, thank you. Thank you. That is nice. All right, item seven is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed or abstentions? All right, thank you very much. We have approved the consent agenda. For the benefit of those in the audience who may be watching, the consent agenda this evening has a lot of hiring of teachers and staff and EPED folks, some advisory committee appointments, the resolution that allows the state to give us technology money, and approval of school meal and milk prices for next year. Moving on to business action information, item 8.01, 2014 scholarship and grant update.
This was just a request from the school board. I think Mr. Sharp actually made it to try to gather the information about the scholarships that our students received from our seniors this year, and so you have that list available for you, and it's right around 1.6 million. We did ask really late for this, and so Ms. Krajnowich said she's going to put this on her list to make sure we're really vigilant. So we probably have missed some where either the students just didn't inform us or couldn't remember what their scholarship amount was, but around 1.6 million. So we're very excited to see that.
Thank you, and this list is pages long, so congratulations to our kids. What a great group they were this year. The next item is a discussion of City Council's proposal for the development of Miller House.
And this is just a request from the city staff to give the school board an opportunity to either direct me, just to send a letter of support if it's something that we do support, where they are wanting to take a house that used to be in... It's still under the city purview right now. They do own the land, but they're wanting to actually knock the house down and then lease the land so that they can have a home for adults with disabilities. And so they've just provided the information for you and are reaching out to the different, you know, local organizations and bodies for support.
All right, thank you, Dr. Jones. Are there any folks on this... Okay, there are.
Just a question about this particular property. Is this the one just past... There's a little church for enlightenment, and then there's a development, but it's before the Sunrise Assisted Living, the small white one? Right in between. Okay, as you head towards Arlington, it's the one... Okay, I just wanted to make sure it was that property. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions on this end of the day, or clarifications?
Have there been any proposals to potentially swap this land bank and do something a little creative out of the box?
I don't... No, I don't remember. Oh, I know as much as you do about this one, so I have an idea. Any questions or issues or concerns on this end?
Well...
Sure?
I'm speaking strictly as a member of the community and not as... Not trying to influence the board, but I'll just observe that if I understand this proposal correctly, it's to provide an opportunity for a nonprofit group to request to use this facility for a group of disabled adults, and it would be transferred to the nonprofit basically at no cost. But the property would need to be leveled and rebuilt. That would be at the cost of the nonprofit, if I understand again correctly what's happening here, and all of the operating ongoing for the new use of this particular parcel would be at the expense of the nonprofit. There would be no tax yield from this property because it would be in a nonprofit tax-exempt status, but there would also be essentially no ongoing city commitment to provide for some sort of subsidy or other way to provide for service within this facility. And again, just as a member of the community, I think it's a relatively modest offer to a nonprofit. Maybe there are some out there who will accept it and be willing, you know, be able to go forward with this, but I think there's probably a need for some additional component to provide for some ongoing funding for the service that would take place here. And I would suggest, if anybody's listening out there in the community, this is a valuable service. That's well needed in our area, and this is a... Given where it is, there isn't much else that could happen on this property commercially or school. There certainly... I certainly don't think there's opportunity for a school here. And so, you know, I think if there are members of the community who are interested in seeing this kind of service go forward and serve some needy people in our community, get your checkbooks out and call up your neighbor and ask him to help out, because that's the kind of thing that's needed in this kind of situation. And if there's a... You know, there are some groups out there that may be interested in doing it, but I think without some commitment from people in the community to provide the supplement for ongoing service, this probably won't happen for quite a while. And the place has been vacant for like five years, and it really needs to be changed and made into a useful property. So, you know, get going on it quickly. Thank you for indulging my concern.
Thank you. Any other questions about this? Does the board feel like we need to formally support this, or just sit by and watch it, or do we want to wait and let folks have an opportunity to go to the August 12th community meeting and learn more, or kind of... What are we thinking?
Just on a comment, I'm not sure this has any relevance, but looking at the map, because I'm just scrolling down, seems it's in that parcel of land with Sunrise. Was there any outreach to Sunrise to see if they wanted us part of their next, or, you know... And I know it's not a school board question, but I'm just curious if anybody knew...
Throw the community meeting on the 12th of August and ask that question.
I will. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome.
Madam Chair, I'd be inclined to see what the August 12th meeting brings, learn some more about it, get some more facts, understand the parameters, and then we can revisit this.
All right, very good. Dr. Jones, if you would put this item for an update on our next agenda, that would be terrific. Thanks very much, everybody. The next item is a construction update from Dr. Jones.
Okay. On TJ Task 1, we did finally sign off on every little thing. You know, once the teachers go home, it's easier to take a door off and fix a hinge and do all of those things, so Task 1 is completely signed off. Task 2, we're still negotiating back and forth, as I shared at the last meeting, and Bob is doing all of that for us, trying to get the final dollar amount because we did have some cost savings, and he's trying to make sure that we don't give up one penny on that. And Hess was waiting on some of the subcontractors who hadn't submitted their final... For the final payment on their end, so we're almost there on Task 2. For pre-K, lots of work going on inside at the pre-K center. If you drive past it, it still looks rather frightening this time of the summer just because the parking lot's torn up, and... But they do have the foundation work that they have poured for the addition portion and doing lots of work on the inside. The difficulty there has been, the stormwater has been more of a challenge, and the city was not pleased with the final number from Hess, and so very thankfully, Bob stepped in and actually was a mediator between the city and Hess, so he managed to get that number down about 65, 70 percent for the city. So we feel like this week they'll be on the right page. So, yeah, grateful to Arcadis for their great work. The Mount Daniel RFP, we will be reviewing those on Thursday, the 10th, this week. Oh, this is this week? Wow. And then on Monday, we will have both of those proposals at the homeowners' meeting, and John and I will be attending up at Mount Daniel for the people that live in and around Mount Daniel who had asked for that, to have, you know, more voice and input. Also, I will be at the City Council meeting on Monday night, as well as some of our PTA, PTSA, just coming to say thank you for the support for the trailers. It's the night that they are having a reading on the referendum, so to thank the City Council for that as well, and just also for Cherry Street, so to let them know we appreciate all the support on facilities. Our GM MEH, we just finished with RTKL, so I don't need to brief you on that. Next meeting for the Steering Committee is next Thursday morning at 7:30. The other project we have going this summer is our trailers, and we're waiting on the demo permit, which we hope we will have maybe tomorrow or the next day, and then they will demo the existing trailers at TJ that need to come out, and our new trailers arrive in about three weeks. But there's a lot of work that goes into just the permitting and planning for trailers. It's kind of amazing. It's just a lot of work. And right now, all the old trailers are all storage because we put all the furniture that couldn't go anywhere else, so we're bringing in a moving truck, and we'll have a big storage unit to get through the rest of the summer while they're putting in the new trailers. So we're full steam ahead, having a great summer with construction.
Busy, busy time. Thank you very much. Any questions about that from anybody? Yeah, Mr. Webb?
One, real quick one. Tony, have you know why I talked about... Because when they had the initial talk about the referendum and a couple of members of council were asking questions and wanting some school responses, I don't know if you and Wyatt have had an opportunity to discuss any questions that they have before Monday night's reading of the first reading?
I've actually been to two of the City Council meetings at their request to answer questions, so I haven't received any more at all. I think it's... I don't anticipate any questions on Monday night. I mean, indeed, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right, very good. Anything else? Okay, moving on to the next agenda item, which is future agenda item topics. This is your chance to tell us what you'd like us to discuss. We do have on our work session schedule more information that Mr. Rankuma had requested regarding some of our programs, and we'll be covering that over the next, you know, weeks during the summer, so we do have that on the agenda, but are there other items that anybody on the board is interested in having the board take up that aren't on the radar? Yes, John?
Just at one point, we were going to have a work session about having students on all our committees. Was that taken... Sort of overtaken by events in the sense that we are going to do that and we don't need to talk about it?
I don't think we need to have a work session on that because I think that they're already on most of the committees that they should be on, and I think that's in the policy. I did ask Dr. Jones to just double-check that that's in the policy. And then the last question was just for our student representative to get with Ty, Bird, and Tony and make sure that they all agreed on the selection process, but I don't think that needs to be board policy. I think that needs to be something else. I don't think we need to have a work session on that.
Okay, and actually, speaking of Zach, he is still out of the country, so he will be at our next meeting. He's back Monday.
Good. I hope you had a great time. That's awesome.
Madam Chair, just clarification there. Perhaps, as I recall, there was planned to have at one of our upcoming meetings a discussion of the organizational... of the organizational matters, and perhaps within that, there could be a look at where students currently serve on committees, what committees will be continuing, or what their purview will be going forward, and whether students are appropriate to add to particular ones that don't have such representation now.
Yeah. I think that, I thought we had the discussion before about which ones were on, but we will certainly review that. I think we need to, in terms of organization, I think there are two conversations we need and will have. One is, once we agree on the three-year priorities, I think we agreed in our spring retreat, they would have a discussion about board committees and whether we need to organize the board into committees or subcommittees to accomplish our work. We also, I think, agreed in spring, and I got a note from Mr. Castillo today, to have a conversation about our advisory boards and committees and which ones we are required to have by law, which ones we have by custom or, you know, preference in Falls Church, whether we need all of them, some of them, you know, and just kind of review that committee structure for advisory boards and commissions as well. So, we'll get to both of those. The first will be first, and the second will either be this summer or as a part of our priority plan, and we'll decide that as we go through our priorities. That make sense?
Very good.
All right. Thanks. All right. Anything else? All right. Very good. And the next thing we have is the superintendent's report.
And I'll keep it short tonight. We do have summer school has started, and the largest enrollment we have is over 200 at Mason, and that's a lot. It keeps growing every year, and part of that is because we do have a hybrid program, so a lot of the kids are on campus, some are working from home. It's very blended, and so there's interest because we're on their schedules and their time. So, we are pre-enrolling for all of our kiddos right now, so we'll be watching enrollment numbers throughout the summer. We're also, our technology team is working very hard preparing for September, a lot of hours going in. We have a couple of consultants actually working with us on our side right now. We have a transportation consultant that we brought in over the next kind of three and a half, four weeks to make sure our routes are correct and everything is highly efficient when we start in September, because we did change the start time, and this is new for us, and just trying to make sure that the same driver doesn't necessarily drive the same route three times or four times in a row. They may drive one route for the first route and then a different type of route the second to maximize efficiency. We also have a technology consultant who is working with the team because, as you know, I do most of our instructional technology direction, and so it's somebody who is, has done large-scale rollouts around the world and around the country, and he does professional development. So, we've hired somebody to be able to come in on that professional development side to make sure we get it right for September. And then we also have, Jesse Thackeray has a new website, if you haven't been on there, and the new logo's on there, and we are hosting the Google Apps for Education Summit on August 8th, 9th, and 10th. And I know, I think Justin is coming to that, and if you want to go, be sure you let us know because we do need to get you a ticket. So, we're busy, busy. August 8th, 9th, and 10th. And the 9th and 10th are probably the biggest full-day events. The 8th is more specialty.
That is a long time. That's neat. Okay. Next is board and student liaison comments, and I'll start with Ms. Ward to my left, if you have to share with us this evening.
No. Actually, the athletic boosters advisory meeting is tomorrow, so I don't have anything today.
Great. Thank you. One request I would make before we go any further is, members of the school board have toured some educational facilities recently with an eye toward learning to inform our decisions about Georgia Mason, so if you did one of those tours, if maybe you could share with the rest of us and the community what you did and where you went and what you thought, that would be really helpful. Okay. So, now, I'm back to you, Mr. Ankuma. Did you go on one? Well, then, please do.
So, last week, we, several members of the school board and city council and some other government, Falls Church government officials, went on a tour of Wakefield High School. It's Arlington's newest high school. It was pretty impressive, I have to say. I think the most impressive thing was the solar power panels they're using. The roof is full of the solar panels, and they have a water cooling and heating system that is actually, they run the water outside underneath the athletic fields where it is, it's buried underground so far that the temperature is a constant, there's a constant temperature. Anyway, it was beautiful building, it looks like it's well-designed, certainly has given me some thoughts and ideas for our new high school, and I'm not going to talk about it too much more because several other members would like to talk about it, sure, I'm sure.
Thank you. Mr. Ankuma, any comments this evening?
Unfortunately, due to our work commitment, I missed this morning's Falls Church Chamber board meeting, but a couple of weeks ago, I attended the daycare advisory board meeting, and yeah, obviously ended well. They're rolling into the summer program. Enrollment is quite robust, lots of activity, especially with all the changing dynamics of logistics in the school. So, Katie has a very challenging task, but she's really up to it with us, that hiring and training and bringing in some additional staff, so that's going well. And I guess the, this, I guess this is the first, the fall will be when we implement that recommended change where the, there's no part-time, there are no part-time programs, especially starting from the Mount Daniels. So, we'll see how, we're eager to see how that rolls out, where folks come in and they just have to go full-time because we weren't interested in a waiting list period, so that's pending, and we'll keep us posted on that.
All right. Thanks very much. Mr. Castillo?
Just a couple of things. Graduation was a real pleasure. I was up there on the stage with my daughter. It was, it's a marvelous affair. Mr. Webb was there, and if you haven't gone to one of those, it's well worth going. A little spoiler alert, when the pledge of allegiance comes, pledge of allegiance comes, just stand still. You'll figure out where the flag is. With respect to the tours, went on a tour of Baloo High School in Washington, DC a few weeks ago, and also went to the Wakefield tour. Both were interesting. They're big jobs. There are many options out there, many ways to go, but one of the things, and this came up during our work session, was a question of what kind of school is it that we want and who's come up with it already, and I think the answer is pretty clear. Nobody has, and it's going to be up to us to figure out what we want, what our school looks like, how it works, how we teach, how we learn, and basically, everything is up for grabs, which is both exciting and terrifying. The architect at Wakefield actually said that it requires a great deal of integration. It's not just the architect. It relates to curriculum, it relates to transportation, it relates to environmental concerns, it relates to community access and involvement and how you make that possible. So, a real sort of blank sheet on which we can draw what we think our future school should look like. One thing I would note, Wakefield occupies 24 acres, and we need a high school and a middle school, and 70% of the parcel is about 24 acres. I think that'll be an interesting matter as to whether you can pull that bit of magic off. We'll see, but anybody who was at Wakefield, keep that in mind. There was no middle school on that site. The last thing, I'll save some thoughts for others on the two sites, but it takes a lot of work and creativity to think through what these new schools will be. Fortunately, we get to go to school on what everybody else has done to date, but in many respects now, things have changed so much with respect to solar panels, with respect to educational technology, that we have phenomenal challenges, but they're great challenges, and I think we'll be up to them, so.
Thanks very much. Mr. Sharp?
I do want to tag on a little bit here with the high school sample projects that we've looked at, and I did have opportunity to go to the Baloo High School, and thank you very much for offering the opportunity. It's very, very enlightening. Some of the same contractors that have participated with us in the past are active at the Baloo site, have been for some time. The timeline is interesting to me. Their total timeline from sort of deciding what they wanted to the point where they expect to be able to enter the new school is roughly four years. So, if you want to strap that onto sort of where we are, that's a little bit challenging. Also, their timeline, they described it as a compressed timeline. They felt it was a rather, rather quick process, given some other projects that this same group had done. And so, again, challenging. They have 16 acres at the Baloo site. They have no baseball, softball, track, I'm sorry, they don't have a separate track. They have just a track for their, like, for their football stadium. So, they have the football stadium, but the other outdoor facilities, the tennis courts, the practice field, the baseball, softball, those are not there. And so, while 16 acres might be enough for, you know, the 1,500-member school itself, which is sort of the demographic that we're shooting at, question is, do the other things fit in? And I agree with Justin's comment that as we look at some of the samples that we're about to undertake with RTKL particularly, that we, sorry, let them know that we need to have some neutrality as far as what the program contents are going to be. There can certainly be some assumptions about that, given what schools are used to looking like, but at the same time, I think we need some flexibility to be able to deal with changes in technology, changes in energy, changes in the delivery of education that sometimes is on-site, and as we are even seeing during our summer school program right now, sometimes is not entirely on-site. And so, you know, we need to have that understanding conveyed to those who work with us, that flexibility, they need to be able to tell us what they're, you know, what they're assuming and show us what that means, but also be able to build in some flexibility to at least part of their undertaking of option-defining for us. I think that's enough on that score. I did have a chance to also participate in the 4th of July readings here in City Hall, and that's a really, really nice experience if you haven't done it before. Lou Olem, again, was able, Lou Olem, who initiated that some years ago with the Village Preservation and Improvement Society, was able to be here and was in fine voice that day. Dave Snyder was actually leading the program with, I think it was his first or maybe second year to do that. He did an outstanding job. He's a great, great amateur historian, particularly in the issues that have to do with the Civil War and really the, he was very, very pedagogical, if you will, in his ability to convey the issues from the revolutionary period that contributed to the Civil War, and it was a great, great time. The, there was a really good showing from the community. I'd say about 50 people were here in the chamber for that, and that's a really nice turnout for that event, including one of our high school teachers in government and in IB, and had a really nice chat with him afterwards. And he was very impressed with the program and, you know, there are others who have participated similarly from our faculty in that, in that readings on almost an annual basis. And I do want to acknowledge the recent passing too of one of our great educators in Falls Church history, a lady named Alice Rooney, a really, really strong role model for, for science, for women. Alice was a, the leader of our chemistry department for many, many years and was an inspiration to both the faculty and her students, and at the age of 102, she passed away a little over a week ago, and God bless Alice Rooney. She was just a terrific, terrific part of our community, and I know many, many people who still remember working with her, having studied with her, and even though I did not have that privilege, their testimony is just glowing about what Alice was able to accomplish for us. And there is apparently some film that has been done with Alice providing a sort of living history, and I hope to be able to gather that together and make it available for purposes of the kind of, here's that great role model of a woman who, you know, in the sciences that we'd like to see our young women be able to emulate and follow that example. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Webb?
Thank you. I took part in the tour at Baloo a couple of weeks ago and concur with Karen and Justin on that, that there is no perfect project, because I was actually surprised of going there, because I went in with the assumption of being a true urban school, that it would have been a multi-story facility opposed to three kind of separate components to it. And I think that was, I was very interested of thinking that going in because of just seeing what that looks like in comparison to the potential of us maybe going that direction for the space that we have. So, that was an interesting piece to see that, and their timing is very, was very compressed because they are planning to, I believe at Christmas, make the transition of students from the old school to the new one, and then over that next year, tear down the existing school and put the, I believe, put the football field back there, because where the school is being built at right now was the football field. So, they're going to be going back to doing that piece, so it was just interesting to kind of see that. And it was good to know that the folks who are doing that do have some experience with us here in Falls Church, so as we kind of move closer to a designing kind of process, it's good to know some folks who have some familiarity with us as well as different projects in the, within the region. And then finally, last night, the Parks and Rec folks went over for the city council's work session. They had a discussion about the West End Park, which has been in the works for years now, because I was on the, that began when I first started and served on the Parks and Rec Board in the middle 2000s, and we're finally at a point, well, at least they think they're at a point of potentially moving forward with getting bids for what, for the project, but there was discussion last night of potentially revisiting, potentially, definitely the skate park feature, because it was a discussion of, is it as popular as it once was when that project was initially discussed? So, there's going to be some, that going on with some community outreach again to the folks on Grove Avenue. And then also, you have that component now with talks of a potential mixed-use project at the corner of Broad and West Street also, so stay tuned.
Thank you.
Just a couple of things. First, I'll be part of the RFP openings Thursday with Susan and Tony, and then our Mount Daniel meeting on Monday, which should be, should be fun. You know, I'm glad Michael mentioned the summer daycare program, because one thing they're doing this year is they've got older kids at MEH, which they hadn't done before. They'd had them all at TJ, and I think it's great that they're consciously saying, you know, for older kids, we need to do something a little interesting, more interesting, because you're not going to get seventh graders who are going to want to hang out with second graders. I mean, it's just a reality. So I think it's a great idea that, you know, Katie has pushed it to have the older kids at MEH this summer, which is, which is a first. I mean, my son's sort of in and out of it, depending on the week. But, you know, he's raved about it. So that's, you know, pass that on to everybody on the, on the board. I was on the Wakefield tour as well, and everybody's pretty much summarized the best parts of it. One thing that was interesting, Abby Raphael was there. She's the chair of the Arlington Board. And at one point, she mentioned, you know, that Arlington does a 10-year CIP. And she said that in their future is probably proposing a 10-story school in Roslin, which she said will probably not be greeted with the most enthusiasm. But, you know, when you talk about being, going horizontal or vertical, they're definitely looking to go vertical in a major way in some areas. And other than that, just have one question for Tony in terms of the, I can't remember whether it's the Wildin or the Walden study. Just curious where that stands.
I was just in contact with him last week, making sure everything's on track. And also just making sure after our last, I think it was our last work session, where we were talking about making sure the housing data is correct in there, and that he's really got everything he needs. And he said everything is on track, and we will have the report in August, as planned.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thanks for that. On the topic of women role models and the sciences and technology, I want to let my colleagues in the board know that my good friend and fellow resident of the city, Kathy Kleiman, has finished her documentary on the INIAC programmers. The INIAC programmers were six young women who programmed the first fully electronic computer as a secret project during World War II, because the men weren't available to be there to do it. And they never received a lick of recognition for it. And so Kathy began researching this topic as an undergraduate at Harvard University a number of years ago. And she has persisted, and her documentary is finally done. I had an invitation from her today to attend a special screening of it at the Community Center, that will be on the 17th of July at 8:30, after our Thursday night concert in the park. If any of you would like to go, and if you have particularly daughters or other young ladies that you think might learn or get inspiration from these women, just let me know, and I'll connect you up and give you the details so you can attend. It's really, this has been a labor of love for hers for many, many years. And it's one that I think, I sent her an email today, and I said, I'd like all the kids in our schools, in our middle and high schools, to have a chance to see this documentary. I think some of our staff have already seen it. But I'd like all of our kids in our schools to have an opportunity to look at this and discuss it. So that's my first thing. The second thing, I'd like to remind my colleagues that at our work session on the 22nd of July, we will be working on the Falls Church City School Board Triennial Plan and Priorities. That's this one-page document, to remind you. And if you would please scan this, and if you have thoughts of things that we need to add, include, expand, change, send those to Tony and to me. Thanks to those folks who've already sent some ideas. We need them by the 15th of July. And then what Tony and I will do is get together and create a new draft of this, that will show everybody's ideas. And we'll start our summer-long process of refining and agreeing and adopting a set of three-year priorities. And then we'll have our discussion about board organization and board committees, and see what we decide, you know, to do with that. And our goal is to have all of this done, so we can adopt this at our first meeting in September. So please send that stuff along. If you have any questions, you know, feel free to call or send an email. All right. With that, I believe that we, yes?
I'm sorry, you reminded me, Madam Chair. Stanford on Coursera has two courses, one for parents, one for kids, about math learning. The parents have to pay for theirs, the kids don't. But we've test-driven that with one student in our household about, and it goes to attitudes about math, and who's good at math and who isn't. And it seems to be working well. So I would, anybody who has kids who think they're not good at math, go to Stanford's site on Coursera, and there's a, there's a good, it's a six-week course, I think, and it's gaining some traction with us. So, for what it's worth.
That's a great little nugget. I had some of that in my household. All right. So I think now we're along to approval of the amendments. And I'm going to ask for unanimous consent to approve the amendments of June 10 and June 24, unless there are objections. If there are no objections, then you don't have to move, because I will order it. Done. That's the lesson we learned from Greg Raznick. That's his legacy from his service on the school board, is that. All right. Finally, there are materials for board review. There's an enrollment chart there, and information concerning Brown Edwards Audit. Is that our financial audit?
Yes.
Thank you. Information about our financial audit. If there's nothing else, then we will adjourn. Anybody have anything?
I just have a question.
Yes, sir.
Do we really lose 20 students in the last month of the year? Is that how that works?
If you actually look over the last three months, you see a huge decline, depending on where kids are moving and where they're going overseas, and what kind of school schedules they're on. And we do, we lose a lot of kids in the last two months of school, two and three months of school. I think in the last three months, it's about 50.
Oh, okay.
Kind of crazy, huh?
Yeah.
And they'll be bringing their friends.
I guess the good, I guess the good news is they, they're not all out of GM. So, or there doesn't seem to be any out of GM. Okay.
Right.
Good.
And if they're going on a Southern Hemisphere school, you have to, you know, where they're moving, you have to remember they start in January. So the semester has started in January. So some of the families want to get out and get settled in their new schools.
Okay.
Yeah. And do we have any read on kindergarten for next year?
Not, that's up to date. It was just large at the end of the year. The kids start coming in now, and we start watching. But all of that's just opened up. So I'll update you as soon as I know.
Okay. And what about kids coming from Northgate? Any notion about where we sit there?
We were still at, right around that, like, 13 mark. And so we'll be watching for that very closely, too.
All right, very good. Thank you. Is there anything else? If not, we'll adjourn. All right, thanks very much, everybody. We stand adjourned.